Right.
Did you see that? We're going to get two to three inches of delay.
I know, I was gonna have you check my plans out back, but then I saw that, so.
There you go.
Time being seven o'clock, this meeting is called order. Excuse me, six o'clock? Sorry. Okay, well, call when you're ready.
All right.
Present.
Williams. Plamish here. Ely. Ryan.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Hudson.
Here.
And Michael.
Here.
You know, there any items to add to the agenda? Hearing none, can we have an accrual to be added as presented?
No accrual for Plamish.
Do you have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, call over to the neighbor. All right.
All right.
All right, do we have any conflict of interest declarations?
No.
No.
Hearing none, proposed changes to Article Five.
I had one item, but there's a new guideline for public comment that was approved last Thursday. And basically, I can just read it now. But it says, "Public comment is a time to address this body on a subject on any matter. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this agenda item till the matter been included on each agenda item." Each person has up to three minutes to speak. So here's the big one. There shall be no personal attacks against any member of this body, account staff, other individual or organizations. And the Chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of earnings. That was approved. Be effective in the meeting.
All right, thank you. All right, so shall we start? Any here, the Gary just transcribed what we agreed to last time. Actually, get hold before I don't want to. So. Do you want me to read? Changes, or what do you think is the best way to attack this? So now we actually have some people in the office that would like to know what's wrong. Just read the only things that are changed? Any suggestions from the board?
I'm just going through it all, like it's.
It's spoken off. All right. So. The first paragraph of definitions. First paragraph. It just clarifies. Words like "may" is permissive. The word "person" includes firm association, organization, partnership, trust, company, or corporation, as well as an individual. The word "lot". Includes the word "platform or parcel", the words "used", "or occupied", and the words "intended, designed, arranged to use or occupy". Right, so that's just a clarification on what individual words mean. The definition of agriculture has changed a little bit. It now reads, "The planting, cultivating, harvesting, and storage of grains, hay, or plants, fruits, or vineyards along with the raising and feeding of livestock and/or poultry shall be considered as agricultural use. All concentrated animal feeding operations, or CAFOs, or animal feeding operations, CAFOs, above forty-nine animal units or more than two-hundred total animals require conditional use or stealing. Elevators, agri-product processing facilities shall not be considered agricultural use if such use constitutes a main or principal use on a lot or parcel. An animal is defined as a living creature, including but not limited to cattle, sheep, horses, swine, turkeys, chickens, ducks, geese, goats, or other livestock. Animal feeding operations. An animal feeding operation is a lot or facility where an established number of animals or animal units are combined, stable, fed, or maintained in either an open or housed lot for a total of forty-five days or more, and maybe twelve when approved. And then it goes on to say, and this is the same definition that was in there before. The only thing they did is strike the abbreviation of animal feeding operation. So. I'm going to continue with the definitions as I started.
Kristi?
Yeah?
Yeah, if I may, why did we strike the abbreviation AFO in parentheses? Wouldn't that be the first time we've seen that? And that would carry through the rest of the document? Would that be appropriate or no?
Yeah, it was left in there before. We can leave it in, I don't know why I stripped it.
I think the original definition didn't have that in there. And. Unless I'm wrong, I thought we wanted to keep it the exact same as it was. I would agree, it probably should be in there. If we want to add that, I suppose we can, but I think what we had talked about is keeping it the exact same. But it's probably appropriate to have that abbreviation in there. It's not in the current definition as it is now.
Well, we just used the abbreviation, you know, a lot later on in Section Five. I just think under the definitions would be the place to put the abbreviation. So if anybody's wondering what AFO is, they can always look back.
I'd agree with that.
That's the way it was before, for some reason.
But that before the whole definition, it was in the, the animal feed operational separate. That's why we, it was in there before, it said capable, new, inadvertent, capable. I agree with Gray.
Right. And so it says the open lots, it says sustainable crops, vegetation, pasture, compost, harvest, residual. Residue, excuse me. In a normal growing season, two or more facilities under competition for a single animal operation, if they join each other within a mile, or if they use a common area or system for this, both will have. All right, and then basically, the next two paragraphs just show the stricken part that was there before. All they did was reword it a little bit and you knew what the content was saying. So they put that last sentence together in the same paragraph. It really changed. Because in the original one, it does have AFO in parentheses. For the purposes of regulation, animal feeding operations are divided into the following classes.
Kristi, could I add, this is second?
Yes.
This is the first. An animal feeding operation, we're leaving it the way it was originally given. The original option. So I remember the problem, that's the way I understand it.
It is.
I think the only discussion was.
Please just place that sentence about common ownership after the incentive. Look at where it is. See those two sentences at the end? All the names are, yeah, they just changed where they were put, that's all.
I think it's the exact same.
It is.
I think it's exactly the same.
Except for AFO.
And I think that.
That's the only change to the header.
Yeah.
I think that's.
Yeah. And so the animal feeding operations are divided into the following classes. The classes have changed. The new classes are Class A. Is five thousand to ten thousand animal units. That's the same. Class B is three to four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine animal units. That is also the same. Class B. Excuse me, Class C is two thousand to two thousand ninety-nine hundred ninety-nine. That is the same, so the only changes are in the last three classes. We added a class. Changed D and F. So Class E is now five hundred to one thousand nine hundred ninety-nine animal units. Class P is now two hundred to four hundred ninety-nine animal units. And Class F is fifty to one hundred ninety-nine animal units. And Class F used to be one to two ninety-nine. Class U used to be three hundred to nine ninety-nine. Class T used to be one thousand to one thousand ninety-nine. We had to change Class F because people were thinking if they wanted to have one chicken, they added out C too. So there was some confusion about that. And we spent many hours discussing this, and this is the numbers that we came up with as proof.
We weren't all in accordance with those, no.
No, but that was the consensus.
Because I said, if we could still move Class F to a quarter mile setback, we could get away from a lot of these problems. But that wasn't taken due here.
No, we agree on the setbacks.
Well. Not for having that class.
Do we want some more discussion on the class side?
Well, like I said earlier, I think that the public input has been lacking terribly because of Zoom meetings. There's been no communication whatsoever from the people that actually work out in the country with livestock. They are happy saying what one I owe them.
Well, this is a working meeting. It's kind of like when they do have a county commission, they set up committees and then they have to work people on the commission. Work in a committee is all around. Then when they have a public meeting, it's a quality of the. It's, it's pride to consideration. So if we had public input, and if what we've been working on this for two months, totally with nine people. Can you imagine how much less you would have accomplished if you had a room full of people and everyone goes to meetings? But they got not everyone in nine o'clock. We need to pare it down first. And then we'll get public, uh, public comments.
Here. Don't you, what was that saved up here, remember? What was that? What was this saved up here, remember?
What's the appropriate time to talk?
At the end of the.
When there's something that comes up that you'd like to speak about, who did you have the appropriate time to speak? I mean, I know there's a lot of questions.
At the Zoom meeting, yes.
This is a working meeting. This is a working meeting. That's what, that's why these people are here, they want to talk.
Well, then they can talk at the end. We were allowed to speak when you guys were.
Not at a working meeting.
Not at a working meeting, you aren't allowed to. I've been here about. Please relax, I feel over there. Do you have? So take notes, and then you can speak at the end for three minutes. And also, we'll show this stuff. And we'll consider it for sure.
Well, call over to the game leader, I think we just said seven, but. What did the?
We're going back through on what we, what we agree on. So if you got your, your notes or your, your. Because what Jerry did is he just refabbed everything that was discussed last time. From that from school to. If you also want to add.
I thought we had to hear somewhere. Asking forty-nine animal units. If there was, we had something to know about.
Yeah, we do, it's, it's coming up. We haven't gotten to that part yet, but it's in there. So right now, that's just the table that I read off of the changes in the animal units in the classes. And below, they have a animal unit table that has what each species would be in as equivalent as one animal unit, just for clarification for people that are reading our orders. So. Animal units are a unit of measure for livestock created as follows. One head, meaning one animal, is a full inch, so many animal units. A cattle eater, slaughterbeef animal, excluding calves under five, excuse me, three hundred pounds, is one animal unit, so that would be one cow. A horse is two animal units, so that means half of a horse is one animal unit. A mature dairy cattle. Mature dairy cattle, excluding dairy calves under three hundred pounds, is one point four animal units. A thorough finish sow is three point seven animal units. Or point three sows makes one animal unit. Swine interproduction unit are point four seven, or two point one swine to one animal unit. Nursery swine less than fifty-five pounds, ten swine, that means ten baby pigs equal one animal unit. Finisher swine over fifty-five pounds, that's fifty-five if you grew, are two point five swine to an animal unit. Sheep or lambs are ten sheep to one animal unit. Laying hens are thirty hens, thirty point three hens to an animal unit. Ducks or geese are five. Ducks or geese, one animal unit. And turkeys are fifty-five point six turkeys are one animal unit. So it varies widely. And due to the turkeys, this is the reason that we put the more two hundred animals to be in class out. Anything below fifty, fifty animal units to one ninety-nine units. Anything under fifty does not need to be. Or anything. So, multiply fifty times fifty-five point six, that's. How many you could have had, you didn't have that clause in there, about two hundred.
Do you use like one hand, we're going to be quick with it? Or something, because right now, it looks like. Point seven, cattle is one point four.
Yeah. Exactly.
It's so little.
So that would be one animal unit to give.
But she got there. You know, it says excluding dairy cattle. Cause dairy cows. Seven cents on that column. Yeah, I just want to make sure that if somebody, well, I'd like to take a horse. Someone doesn't think two, half of a horse is two animal units. Yeah, it is so little.
Yeah, it should have one animal unit in the bottom.
Yeah, there needs to be a header at the top there, right, to explain what that column is?
I agree. Did you catch that, Gary?
Yep.
Or to. Okay, so the next page is a table that will be deleted. We're trying to make this ordinance more concise. And what that did is it gave you numbers for each different type of animal in Class A, B, C, D, or E. People could use a calculator and figure that out themselves. So we just have one table saying, stating what each of those animals would be for one animal unit. So if you have fifty animal units, you take that number and times it. Make sense? Farm, ranch, or orchard. This is a definition. And an area of not less, well, the only change to that is that they added that animal feeding operations and CAFOs. Farm, ranch, or orchard. An area of not less than twenty acres of unplanted land or is a part of a contiguous ownership of not less than eighty acres of unplanted land, which is used for growing usual farm products, vegetables, roots, trees, and grains, and for the raising thereof of the usual poultry and farm animals such as horses, cattle, sheep, and including the necessary accessory uses for raising, treating, and storing products raised on the premises. But excluding animal feeding operations, or CAFOs, processing and storage of raw agricultural products. The reason those things are excluded is because they have their own definition. And that's why those CAFOs and CAFOs are not in that definition, because they have their own definition. Processing and storage of raw agricultural products such as grain elevators and and animal plants shall not be considered a farm, ranch, or orchard if such constitutes a main or principal use on a lot or parcel. In other words, if somebody has a grain bin on their land, it's on their own farm. It's a farm. But if they're storing grain and selling grain and processing, or you add that facility and that's their business, that's not a farm, that's an agricultural business. So that's the difference. Irrigation systems. This term shall include all the nails which is piping, center pivots, and other nuts utilized for irrigating crop line. This term does not include system design to land a fine waste or water from animal feeding operations or CAFOs as the. All irrigation systems shall comply with all state and federal regulations. Swimming pool is a water-filled enclosure permanently constructed, having a depth of more than twenty-four inches below the level of the surrounding land, or a permitted above-ground pool having a depth of more than thirty inches, designed, used, and maintained for swimming. They took out. And being, oh, there's, that hot tub did not need a permanent. And they took out the word portable, so the portable tools that they put up, and they keep down every season, that is not the. Now here's Article Five, agricultural business. Do we just want to go over the changes? Like, do you want me to?
Yeah.
Or do you want me to read everything? Really love?
No.
Let's read the changes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Can we just go by section and just see if anybody's got issues by section? And then you don't have to read the whole thing.
All right. Section five oh one.
Looks good to me.
I'm good.
Yeah, we did. We didn't, we, we talked about changing, we put it back the way it was. Article three.
Article one, it's going to look like, if it's Article one, there'll be no changes.
Right.
It's parks and wildlife and game production areas proposed, we crossed that out.
I think we're on Article one.
Article one.
I think we just, we found us the same and did us another.
Oh, that's Article three, excuse me. Article one, you're right. I was going for you.
All right, so we're fine with Article one.
Yeah.
Article three, the changes were, we just changed the definition of agriculture, which it was red. Then two family dwellings were allowed as a permitted use, so that was something that was changed. And then they put in a definition for farms, ranches, orchards, as defined herein that again, was. But so they just included ranches and orchards. Then. These are permitted uses. Principal uses and. And they included parks as a permitted use. So if somebody wants to make a park with this.
I'd like to.
Yeah.
Are you just saying park? All right.
Uh, this is, uh, on the park issue, I think that should remain a.
Conditional use?
Conditional use. Just for a simple fact that if you travel around the country, it's commonly different where the state even has some. Areas. They have a lot of trouble with trash. Especially if they're isolated someplace. And kids, signs, the party, and stuff like that. And I know that the state's out, but we were right down there. Finally, some rail, trash barrels, and all of this stuff.
All right, you want to put that back as a conditional use? That's where it was this one. All right. I'm fine with that. Did anybody have an objection to that change?
No, I do, I agree with that too.
Okay, sure. So it's back in a.
The second one is the next one, the wildlife and game production area, but I think that's a condition. It wasn't just too many years ago, we switched there. Outbreak a TV and cattle dealers. That was caused by a game farm.
You get closer, your mic's in, I can't hear you.
A game farm in Nebraska that had a, raised elk. And they contracted TV and it passed to the neighbors cattle. Most of those contacts. And they were sold breeding numbers to diet by rein and to other producers around here. And they all had to end up killing, slaughtering. Even the breeders. It becomes a real issue. The other thing is, is more and more interest is generated in buffalo things. There are also, you know, who have seen any things about the big buffalo ranches out of the western part of state. TV show open numbers out there. Pass it on to the predators, cattle, and they have to get one TV. They probably, so. I'm not against the two things, I just think that they should be.
Right, because then we could make them, make, make an extra plane so that there's ten meters space between.
That or even that, so you could place an addition about it and be classified. So he had some work in there after, that some people might not know that they were going to come to then. And I think it's, they're the only program on us to.
Protect.
Protect that. Absolutely.
Does everyone else agree with that?
Yes, I agree.
Like a game production areas as a CV?
Yep.
All right. All right, so no more discussion on that? So the next section is five oh five, permitted accessory uses. Instructions. So in number one, we just grabbed the word agricultural structure. It's just plain old accessory structure. So they can have a, build a garage or whatever, it doesn't have to be dreamt in time to. And then we added swimming pools in here as a permitted accessory use. So that was an addition. We changed the definition of swimming pool for that reason.
Sounds good.
It's good to me.
Talking about that, I know we, that one time talked about. With the definition, it would be that make a.
Oh, it's natural.
Right, because otherwise, the people know that that's what the definition is. That they'd say that in the definition.
When they do, or what.
Right.
The definition is, yeah.
We were recording this.
Didn't hear all that, what?
Last line, maintain for residential swimming, how does that sound?
Yeah, because that's what we.
Right, that was the. Exactly.
So we're just going to insert residential at the beginning?
Makes it real clear.
Yeah. I think, um, if you put it, the second word to the very end of that definition is. Maintain.
Okay.
Is that all right with everyone?
Well, I mean, that was actually a definition of an amusement park in, in our ordinance and. I don't know, I, I see what you're saying, but I think it's kind of unnecessary to add that. You know, to do that.
Just call it residential swimming pool.
I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine.
Make a sample with me. Sample one word. Yeah.
Now we are to Article seven. Additional uses. So the change is animal feeding operations because of the animal unit change. It's now above forty-nine animal units and or two hundred or more total. The reason we did the total animal thing rather than just taking the animal units is because there's over fifty-five duties to one animal.
And chickens.
And chickens or anything like, any kind of culture, so.
So some of these things we voted on.
We voted on.
They're off topic. I don't handle that.
So you can go up to the student.
Well, I guess. Go back to the class sizes, I don't necessarily agree with, with the two hundred animals. I don't know, but I agree with that.
Propose.
Last time proposed. Bigger name separated into a different class system, newer class system. A little more in depth than just the, and changing the class. The last time I said, we voted on. So that thing is what I'm curious on, some of these things we voted on. Change this note or or we just rehashing what already been locked in?
I was going, we were already locked in, so they're the classes, so. That's what I would vote.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what we're discussing here. What, 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 what is the question? What is, what is the proposal? What are we talking about?
All right.
Well, the question I have, Greg, is are we just giving an overview of what's already been changed and essentially is what we're moving forward with? Or are we still making suggestions? Because like the class sizes, we, we took a vote. So does that mean that that's off the table for discussion?
Well, how many times you want to vote on it?
That's the, that's why I asked what the intent of this meeting was. Really, I've made two meetings where this rehashing was been done. So if we're just making clerical.
Well, make it, make a proposal, we can vote again. I guess it's up, if the chair recognizes that, I don't know, whatever. Let's just move forward. Say, say what you want to say, ask for it and, and vote, let's go, let's move. And then when we move, let's not go backwards.
That's not the asking, Greg, is are we, are we just simply going through and making clerical, clerical changes, but content isn't going to change? Or what is the intent of this meeting? That's all I'm asking.
I'd say if you have a final solution once you're, I'm willing to change my mind if it's better than what we've got.
Right, until we, until, until we vote to send it to the commission. Sorry.
What I would propose is not a whole lot different than last time. I guess we didn't really discuss it last time, was the deal.
Well, we talked about it for an hour, ten minutes.
What's the proposal, Joe? What's the proposal?
Well, the proposal is that we separate the manure class systems.
But we're not talking about the manure class.
Right, but it's tied into the two hundred animals. So if it's specific to this here, if I don't.
Okay, then we can vote on striking the two hundred animals and leave the forty-nine animal units.
I don't think we're doing a good job of.
Can't hear you, Dan.
Uh, okay.
Giving like ten, twenty minutes, I mean, if you got a proposal, let's, let's hear it. It might be, it might be good, let's, I guess if you got a better idea.
We've talked about these things several times and I thought we were going to go through and just finally get the finalized idea before we make a vote.
That's what I'm asking, is, is that overdoing?
I would, that's what I thought we were going to do.
Well, do you have a different idea? Joe, do you have a different idea or something new? Just say it.
Yeah, I don't agree with the two hundred animals and I don't agree with forty-nine animal units.
But what do you want, Joe?
And I would propose the forty-nine go to probably two hundred or. Well, that's what it was voted on, so it's on the table, so that's what I'm asking. What's the intent?
Honestly, I don't think so, Joe. Because we're in a working session. That would get to the point where we actually push the changes forward.
Right.
I have.
Yeah, I know.
Basically, your vote is a consensus, so what the group's feeling.
Right.
But I still think that when you get all through all these changes that we are proposing there, we get down to the last day where everybody's into that, we're going to have a vote. Yes or no, this is what we're pushing forward for the right most changes to the order.
Right. And I understand that. I understand that. I'm just asking, are we having more discussion or that we voted on that portion? Let's go through this thing and clean up little errors here. It sounds like we're just cleaning up.
Should we vote again on whether or not to keep that or do something different?
I'm, I'm willing to listen, I'm willing to listen to a, a, an idea, Joe. So I, so I don't know, so who, Christie, do you need to make the decision whether we're asking for more, uh, open for more suggestions or what? Somebody make the decision and then we can get the suggestions and then we talk about that.
I think I told that what I suggested isn't specific to this sentence that we're talking about, so it's not valid.
Well, you said.
I'm proposing changes quite a bit, that's the, that's the thing. That's the issue.
Yeah, because you wanted to do it on the manure management plan, if you were solid, if you were solid and semi-solid or like. Yeah, I mean, I remember that part, I, I cannot find that paper you handed off last.
So you're, you're talking about all the changes you talked about last time, Joe? That's what I'm not clear about. And I, I don't mean to sound impatient, but if you're talking about all the changes you had last time or just something new as far as class size, what, what, what are you talking about?
Well, essentially, it's, it's not all of the changes, no, but if it went to a, if we classified them based on their manure management system, then that changes the class sizes and where C Ps come into play and where they don't. So it's a kind of domino effect. So it, it does get bigger than just, should we have classed up at two hundred animals or forty-nine animal units?
Okay. All right, I'm starting, it's starting to get a little clearer, so. Um, thank you.
Well, I feel that we did discuss that quite a bit before and I think we don't need to throw off the baby with the bathwater. I think we could raise small changes now and then consider different manure management systems. Is it supported to solid with their semi-solid and another. I don't know how the rest of the board feels though, but I think that we're kind of biting off huge chunk. We try to change the whole system because that's changing.
Why would it? I don't disagree. If I do find your, I have your copy of what you did hand out.
All right, so are we accepting that below forty-nine animal units? We do not need any, I, um, C P or anything like that. That's the lowest class. Is that fine with everyone?
I, I think we should decide, do we want to continue on the path that we're on? Or do we want, as a board, want to look into more of what, um, what we really have? If you don't want to, you know, the consensus rules, you know, knowing that, uh, if we do go that the path, it's going to change probably a significant amount of what we have.
I think, and this is bad, it's a guy, I had, you know, to be fair, I think to everybody, that's, it didn't matter if it was Joe's plan or plans on some of this other stuff that's in here. Um, it's very hard to be handed it, walking through the room and trying to make a decision on it. First, you got first off how it works and then go forward. I'm all enthused about or, you know, interested in looking at the process, but it isn't something that I need to be handed in favor of. Right, or, you know, last minute and try to make a kind of a decision on what your proposal is. I'd like to, you know, take it, spend more time on it and, you know, and how we do it as far as uh, seeing examples come in or, you know, things like that, where that, how it actually works. You know, I take a model facility and see how it will change. Because like a lot of us that are in livestock production are more than one species. So it makes a big difference, you know, half to the lot is way different than finishing barn or right, it's, it's potent change if you're working with two or three different, at least two or three different types of herb. And so you got to see how that plays out, see if it helps or not. What your proposal would go on, which I'm also looking at it, I just, you know, and maybe this is such a thing that we should hold this point, you know, if we're going to have more views, but hold this point, get more chance to go through it on our own, you can see what your numbers, the numbers are and, and re-study, come on, and then decide on that one later. Who allow us some of the stuff that we're kind of going on, but still not make a specific decision on this animal unit.
Sure, and that's fair. And now the intent last time was to just present that and say, okay, I'm not expecting an answer, but I think the direction we were going, I wasn't necessarily agreeing with, and I wanted to try to introduce some discussion on, on other, other ways of doing this, so, but yeah, we can, we can move on.
One thing, George, if you got your copy, I was looking at these classes that are on here. For some reason, your, your class F went from one to one ninety-nine and then it jumped to three hundred to nine ninety-nine. There was no, we were missing a hundred head in between your.
Yeah, I think when I put those together, I, you kind of mentioned last time, I just cut and paste some different. Uh, and so that was all. It was more the, the idea of it and then we would, because I, I didn't imagine we would land where I have, you know, class, I put so much time into it and then, and then, you know, it would be for us to decide what those class sizes would be.
But, but I, and, and I still feel like Dennis too, a lot of these changes, I know a lot of people, it probably doesn't make any difference to, it's really not a big deal, but there's a lot of producers in this county, it will be a big deal too. And, um, so we, we want to be, wanted to make sure that we be able to cover the things that they have thoughts on also before going to the last meeting where all of a sudden now we're going to vote. And I've said this before, this public comment to the Zoom is, is rather pathetic. Um, and it's very, very hard to hear on the Zoom. Um, so a lot of times they, now, now the microphone's a work in tonight, which Gary, I don't know if you got to go on it, comes out, uh, before was very, very hard to hear. And I think this is a very sensitive subject, I think it needs to be heard by a lot, so.
But even mine is still just the wording, so we're not worrying about anything that's going to come along right now. We are drafting.
I agree.
All right. So animal feeding operations above forty-nine animal units and or two hundred or more animals. Are we going to leave the two hundred or more animals in there or are we going to straighten?
Leave it.
I was going to.
All right, number two, concentrated animal feeding operations. That just says that they're conditional use, they were conditional use before. And the only other change here, number thirteen dwellings, additional farm in excess of one, splits to five, thirteen, five, and fifteen. So we already have that.
If that's, there's no change to that.
Yeah, there's no change to that, I don't know.
No.
That's the same. That's the same thing that you can have more than one farm place on a farm. To go like when, when a farm is, is being, uh, side yard. That was in the ordinance that blocks, so I'm not sure.
All right, kind of strange, I don't know, that's why it was read, if you move it a couple of times. It's strange, it's under additional use, but then when you go, uh, five thirteen, five, and then it's administrative. That's why we were moving that around or not.
Oh, maybe that's why it was put over there, just put a different category.
Uh, it's, it's as, it's number twelve on, under five oh seven.
Right, and then in five thirteen, five, it's administrative.
All right. And then they struck, meaning they deleted the number twenty-one where it says individual septic or sewage treatment facility went to section fifteen or twelve. They took that out because they already have to be certified. So it's just a change from when this ordinance was written until now. And we are adding back in parks and we are adding in as conditional use the wildlife and game production areas. And another one, and in there subdivision says defined herein, subdivision has its own set of rules. So we can add a subdivision if we need all of those rules and get a C P and all that stuff. It's just a reference to that that is the law. Then they did some tweaking on the, um, spreading injection and other application of manure or animal waste generated by animal feeding operation or CAO as described herein. Um, instead of citing the sections and all of that stuff, we just put as described herein. Spreading injection or other application of manure or animal waste from any livestock production needs located outside of games and house. Located outside of Yangtze Valley. And then, oh, we're putting that, all my things, those.
Missed it, I, we had talked about it, I don't know what it really ended up, but when we talked about. Other dwellings on farmsteads. And I know I talked to Gary about it and she talked about it, we add that rule in that are in here that would allow. Him to administratively. Uh, issue we'll be submit on. Like a, the two acre lot or whatever because of financing, but they still had the whole. Twenty acres, we haven't discussed any, uh, it's like, we've briefly discussed that, but never.
No, it's still, it's still conditional use.
I don't, I don't understand. Well, that was some of, we kept talking earlier about trying to eliminate a lot of the variants. Half the company for variants on these things. Was to, if it was like piece property that was sold, some of those kids, twenty acres, but. They don't, they owned the plot for the twenty acres, but because of financing, they did a two acre plot to pass by the financial thing. Isn't there a way to write that that allowed them to. Plot that off as long as that isn't helping build on that twenty acres.
Well, that's what we did to the variants.
That's, that's.
Get away from the variant.
Right. Which now where I am, I wasn't sure how to make that work, Dennis, what you said, that's where I proposed to just. County Minnehaha, Lake, and Brown, they all do the four workers. Only have one house per. And lots are anywhere between one to two and a half acres.
You're, you're making the minimum lot four acres or so.
But you're not.
Well, um.
You're talking about building other.
Correct. So the, the, in those counties, the. Lots, minimum lot requirement would be, let's say, two and a half acres. You just can't have more than one home.
Yeah, basically, yeah, we're forty-eight.
Can I, can we finish?
Let's just deal with what we've been talking about, so.
Well, it is a little bit off subject.
I'd say we finish. Five oh seven and then move on to the lots. Because I thought we're still on five oh seven.
Well, I think we, I love everything that we changed.
I guess we know in five fifteen.
So in five oh nine, five eleven, we haven't changed, five thirteen, uh.
Wouldn't that be in five thirteen where that change will be made? Wouldn't that be appropriate there for a minimum lot size, if you wanted to do something with that? Right, and then it would affect this, the. If I had brought up was the second home. Which is under conditional uses. But yeah, it, it would, it would primarily be addressed in five thirteen.
Yeah, you had something written up, do you want to pitch that to us now, Joe? You had something written up on that, not time.
Yeah, I just got the page out of County.
Play County only requires five.
I think you're missing how that reads though, Christie, it, it doesn't require forty acres. It requires two and a half acres.
But you're telling them that you can't put another house on that forty.
That's correct, right.
Well, then you're limiting those forty acres. You're limiting how many homes you go on that forty acres.
That we are, yes.
Yes.
Yeah. That, I think that was.
Right now we have a twenty acre minimum lot size.
You've done a.
Now, with the court firm, basically it's got that forty acres to build a house on two acres.
Right.
How, how would that affect, we've done a lot of houses, especially this year for. You know, family member moving to take over the farm, then how does that work with. They're building a farmhouse next to grandpa or dad, it's a twenty, forty locked up. And if we look at the county, we didn't have a zone for a long time. How many houses does that rule, you know, then put in non-conformant, I, I agree, and I think we all agree. Twenty acres is. Even if you have twenty acres, the bank's not gonna finance it, it's the two acres move. She inherited eighty acres from her back. And she came in and did what she was supposed to, plot it out twenty acres. Then she went to the bank and the bank said, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna give you. This, a loan for that because it's too much loan. And so she wanted to come in and get a variance of two acres, so. This was probably a great idea seventeen years ago, but it's, it's not feasible today to do the financing.
Actually, I think it started all with the.
No, yeah, yeah. So, yeah. You know, and I, I don't have, we have a map, there's something like. Eight hundred and thirty-seven. Um, properties in the egg area in Yankee County that aren't twenty acres. So there's a huge number. I think if we would have it in twenty acres in the eighties, it would have probably been a good, you know, like Minnehaha did and Brookings did, but. Last time we heard it, I guess I would be in favor of. Reducing that to some number if we want to stop variances, I don't know what that number is, but. I think twenty acres isn't working.
It's five in an egg district.
But from what I'm hearing, and saying we've been here a long time, almost every variance that comes in is. Two and a half acres or a lot, sometimes they're even less. And so if we reduce it to ten, and it's still gotta give variance, and we help anybody, if we reduce it to five. And they gotta give variance, are we helping? And, and we also gotta think, okay, say we do five acres, that's a big area for people who know, is it gonna be an unsightly? Mess, is that taking even more? Egg ground other productions by doing that? I don't know, um.
Union County is two and a half.
But I, I don't, I don't feel that. I'm not in favor of reducing the twenty acre minimum lot size, what I'm in favor of is understanding. That because of the financial world, the financing world, and how they operate. Nobody, we have financing on that, easy around on that to build a house on that, is you have two acres, that's just their rule. So I don't think that the person should analyze. Or. Like, that particular case, he can inherit all. So it's not like it's gonna be off and, you know, that are the bone and stuff, I mean, I bet they sort of fence around it. Kind of with the birds, with the two acres of house. You know, I mean, that's just the way it is, but, and then the other one, a lot of them are too. Is, you know, the whole sticker is financing. And then the other thing is, the twenty acre lot, the lot sizes will not work to protect the land away from that. The farmers around that, get, issue setbacks or things like that, they gotta have some buffer on their home property away from their property.
Don't worry, you were saying administratively, if they can, if they can handle that as long as they're not fully.
As long, as long as the plot, as long as the type of property that they come in, request that on. In their name, they hold a deed on it, and then they would write this plot. Whether administrative thing that would allow them to get, to plot out two acres on that, that would be reported with their deed and it would stay, just like a. A easement or whatever, perpetual, it stays on and never changes. That house goes with that twenty acres. If they're perceived to sell that twenty acres or to sell the house, they gotta sell the twenty acres with.
And, you know, part of that, though, you said, people don't want to do that, is that severely restricts. Who's gonna purchase that, all the variances and that have come through lately. None of them have twenty acres attached to them, you know, for, for that reason. We're not gonna stop. Small acreages in Yankee County, they're, they're all over already. Um, and, and by forcing somebody to even on land that they own, out twenty acres, I just, I don't. I don't see that as a positive, but it hasn't worked, and the proof of that is the hundreds of variances we've done in the last five years. And I don't recall, I don't even recall one of them getting turned down. So if we're always approving a variance. You know, I think it's, it's time to look at that, and I, I'm not aware of any county around us. That has twenty acres, I want to say Bon Home is.
Bon Home is five.
And I don't know what number we're gonna come up with, but.
I think it is two and a half.
I think the way to look at this is like we did with the accessory structure size, Article Six, seven. Because, um, rural transitional is twenty acres, low density rural is five, uh, commercial is two, roadside commercial is two. I think it would be best to go through and look at all lot sizes in all districts. And take it like we did accessory structures and deal with the like thing and, and do it example. I, I think taking this and changing this, just because we're already in Article Five, I don't know if that's the best course of action. If we do change this to two, then rural transitional is still twenty, uh, low density rural is still five. So I, I think the way to do it is. Do, you know, do lot requirements. Throughout all the districts at one time, because, okay, we adjust this twenty acres. Then the minimum lot width, then five hundred feet's not gonna work, so we're gonna have to adjust that too.
Yeah, it was two hundred and fifty feet.
I think it does, so technically in here though. What you're talking about now is changing all the districts.
Well, I, I think we need to look at, because commercial, for example, is two acres. So someone, and we ran into this a lot, if somebody wants to build a gas station, they want to do a fireworks stand. They want to even do a crack stand, two acres, that's a big chunk of ground that we force them to buy. It's high price because it's commercially, uh, zoned. A lot of places, you know, if they look at the two acres, that's, that's tough for them to buy and, and leave it there. I really think we need to look at. Reducing commercial, for example. And talking, I think you and other people, originally commercial was big factories and things like that coming in. But now we're seeing fireworks, seeing gas stations, um, metal shops. I think if they meet a minimum lot requirement, um, and the setbacks on the side, then we should be able to encourage that, both especially in commercial areas. But just having an arbitrary number of two acres because it's two acres. I, I'm, I'm seeing businesses not get established in Yankee County because that's part of it, so. And, uh, so I, I would take a holistic approach on all the lots and look at, you know. Twenty acres in rural transitional, that's not working either. Five acres in low density rural, that's really not working very well. I, I would, I would be in favor of doing it that way. Just like we did accessory structure size. We didn't go into Article Six and say. We're gonna do Article Six just because we're already in here. We realized there was a problem with accessory structure size. And if you have these, we have six, seven, eight, we were done. We all agreed, it's an easy change and it's done now. And I think that's the same thing that I would propose to the lot requirements.
Well, don't forget, uh, you've already voted on changing the subdivision regulations to where we're really not. Gonna be doing by your, administrating by your plats anymore, so this kind of goes backwards. From what you already approved in that regard also, so.
Yeah.
In, in reality, everything, all the plats are gonna be going in front of you for the, I don't know. It's approved under county commission size.
Yeah.
Well, let's see the.
Just, I have a whole bunch of notes on the twenty acres, uh, but the whole thing. You know, the twenty, the twenty acres puts. A ton of acres, the majority of farmsteads. I don't know if else the majority, but I did look and there was five hundred or something, there's a lot.
I think there's a board right behind the.
That are, that are, when that ordinance was released, it put those into house. That we have issues with variances where they want to move forward and. And it's the same thing I said with, part of the reason I have some issue with this ordinance, is we're, we're putting a lot of existing operations into that. And I don't agree with doing that when we write forses.
That may already establish partners in order of.
Right, until they come into, for billing permit to put up a structure.
And now they need a variance because they're live, it's not twenty acres.
We changed that in house requirements. The better.
But so, so that's, I guess, one of my issues with it, is the financing thing is, is an issue. The twenty acres. I mean, the intent of, of. Article Five, right here. Preserve land best suited to agriculture uses. And hitting twenty acres out of agricultural production because of some variance, to me, doesn't make sense. It's not where I like the, the smaller acres, but then limit, the intent is so we don't have. Houses all over. And that's why we, that's why I, I like what the other counties do with a. Look at forty, 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 right.
But that's very people's, a lot of them just have smaller lots.
Well, I didn't say every time, I said I, I like them. And because it does limit the, the number of houses that can go up, but it addresses all the issues that we're talking about. And it makes it simple, because we don't have variances, we don't have, oh, now we gotta plot out this smaller one. Side of the twenty and then have this side, and then not to mention. When we hear twenty acres, we think the res, the residential side of it too. You know, the seed business had to come in for variance. In an egg district to sell seeds, because you want to buy they're live. There were some, I'm gonna call it junk ground by the river, somebody wanted to buy for hunting ground, they had to join their land. And in total, they had way more than twenty acres, but because this was a separate parcel, they had to jump through a bunch of hoops. And it just, to me, it, it doesn't make sense. To say every lot within the county has to be twenty acres.
So that I.
No, but.
The quarter, quarter rule. What's small.
Still has to be established farmsteads on that quarter.
No, you can, you can parcel out, but that's the part I disagree on. But they just, I just think about it though, today, as our ordinance writes today. You could take a piece, you could take your most unproductive piece. You could go build a house. Yourself, it now becomes an existing acreage, you can flat that off. Fairly. And then you can sell, you could do that all day. You could do that on, you could put eighty homes on, on eighty acres.
I would promise you, that's a plan you need to develop.
Right, you could, you could do it, oh, sorry, you can do it on sixty. Sixty homes, because you could do none at a time until you get down to that last one, these twenty acres.
But that's not how I like to do it because.
No, my point was if you're gonna own a twenty acres, you're allowed one. Lot, we use.
Right, or a house on it, and that's all you're building on.
If the landowner puts the house on and it becomes an acre before you flat it off. Then it becomes an existing acre according to our definition, and you can flat off that one.
And still, and still, we're gonna have four houses on that eighty, because still I can have twenty acres to do.
If you had eighty acres and you built one home on it.
All that you're, what you're saying is you're allowed to build a house on it.
You are allowed to build a house, you couldn't sell it off.
Oh, right, yeah.
But you can build a house, and so if you're worried about somebody developing the countryside. You can do that today, what I'm saying. I just, I don't think.
Not many farmers would do that.
I don't think if we went to the, to the, call it two acres in the quarter quarter, I don't think we're all of a sudden gonna have a ton of.
You know, and I'm, I'm wondering if this isn't the solution in search of a problem. Because I, you know, what we're realizing is when people are buying property and refinancing, that, that's when they have the issue. Building a house and it's almost always like. Building a house and it's almost always selling mom and dad or grandpa's ground or, or something that they inherited, which is already over twenty acres, is where they have given the variance. You know, I don't see farmers selling a lot of two acre flats to people who move out of the country that aren't related to them. I don't see that as happening. You know, established farmhouse is, that are there, yes, and family, yes, but that's happening anyway. So us to put even, even more restrictions on it, I just, it's, it's, it's not a problem now, so why are we trying to address something that isn't vision? You know, if somebody doesn't want, people live it in their area, don't sell them land, probably so.
Well, I think the other thing to go with what I had proposed is that the setbacks apply to homes as well, is the leasing operation. Do we need to put that in?
We have. Yeah.
If, if we went to that, for new, smaller acres, limited to a quarter, quarter, and also put in a setback from a new home to an existing acreage, that meets the same setback that we imposed on acreage. I think everybody's protected.
See, you know, I proposed this two or three years ago, of, you know, some kind of a covenant also, uh, like that. Okay, you wanna build this house out here, that's good, uh, that's good and well, but when, and I, I'm a little, really more scared, but now after COVID nineteen, more and more people are gonna wanna exit these cities, they're gonna come to our land, we're living a quarter hour to urban sprawl, and then, and that bothers us, because we.
You need money to laborize our food.
And uh, and they, we, I feel we should have some kind of a covenant uh, to protect the existing farmer from, from potential lawsuits if they're doing everything by the book.
Well, I think what I had proposed to have that, if somebody wanted to build a home closer to than what the setback shows, then they would be likewise. Yeah, that's available.
Yeah, that's a good level, it's already in our rules. That's already in our rules.
Yeah, and we've had a thought of somebody like. Right.
And that's our, that's our.
Somebody who's in, wants to build a house next to an existing lot there, or a, a, a cable wants to come in, or a guy wants to come in and build a barn close and visit with his neighbors, and they're willing to sign a waiver to allow him to build a home.
That's already allowed.
And that stays with the property.
That's the bill, that's for the people to move closer. But I'm saying that if I'm gonna build a house and I'm gonna, you, I would need to do the same.
Right. But, but you know, a lot of the problems that we've had over the last three years was from the proper setbacks, and it still is, and that was great resistance, I feel that there still will be problems. Mixing residents of non-agricultural backgrounds with more, uh, with more, I just think it's evident that we will have that problem.
I just don't think that it's gonna, I think all of the issues we've addressed, for the most part, could be solved. And I don't think you're gonna see a, a vast changes in the.
I hope not.
Does somebody have a proposal on this? I guess my proposal would be to leave five thirteen alone for now. But I don't know if somebody else has. Yes, I, I think it's best served by going through, looking at all lot requirements throughout zoning and address them, because if we do this one, then we got.
We gotta change.
A bunch more and then we all got less, um, and it's easier to.
We don't have variances in the other district.
They'll be every month.
Well, commercial.
I agree, but I, I, I still think though, and this goes from way back, we're gonna start changing all the districts. We need to go back to the conference and finally rewrite that. And we're gonna send, put the roadmap out there where, where the development has changed, or business changed, like the rural transitional. And all these, and that needs to be that guideline for all this stuff, because we're gonna consider and argue about wanting to build a cable on the north end of the airport, another one, and it's allowed in an ag district, but you got all that transitional stuff going on and more stuff being built, commercial stuff out there, might as well go back. So that is the, to me, the big project in the room is that, at some point, that's gotta be done.
No.
But tonight, tonight, we're gonna, no, you want me to. They will have to be.
I would, I would, I would be for it, the way it is now. So that, that would be my.
Well, we, we all know they get a little bit anxious anytime we have a real discussion with.
Can I just put in a couple, couple comments on that?
Yes.
Yeah, it, it, I, I agree with Dennis on the, uh, I think you need to start with the comprehensive plan and really get a idea of what the county wants, not just, you know, one farmer, two farmers, two non-farmers. I mean, we need to get the whole county together on the comprehensive plan and really, and, and lay out a, a plan, you know, that should really be reviewed every five to ten years at, at, at a minimum and, and rework, because as, as growth happens, right, everybody keeps talking about they want growth, you got Yankton area progressive growth, you got all these other groups around and around wanting growth, growth, growth. Well, with growth, you, you, that usually involves more people, which is a higher density. So where do you want your density? Where do you want the growth to happen? If you don't control the growth and put it where you want it, then you run into problems where you, you've got, uh, you got your setback issues and you got people complaining because of noises and smells and that could be next to the airport, it could be next to the, uh, to, uh, the radiator plant, it could be next to anything, right? It's not just about farming, it's about what, where you want the people to be able to live in conjunction with this growth that everybody talks about, so. Um, because everybody wants growth until it's in their backyard, then they don't want it. You know, they want it someplace else, so I, I do agree with the comprehensive plan being the first step and, and I do agree with Dan, you need to look at a, all of the districts and, and look at, so that the lot sizes make sense when you look at the districts as a whole. And it really comes down to the density issue, and I also agree with what Joe said. There's gotta be a way in an agricultural district to have, to, for people to be able to build a house and not just the farmers that already own the land, to build, they can build a house, but somebody else can't. I mean, that, you gotta be careful there too, I think too, so. Anyway, that's my two cents and I'm agreeing with moving on too, thank you.
I'm gonna put my two cents forth, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I agree with what Greg just said. You, if you're gonna come up with a fancy plan, it's got to be reevaluated, that's one of the purposes of, of it. But then I'm listening to what you guys are saying, some of you guys are saying, and I agree with you. One of the big complaints that I've heard was, well, I built this house a couple of years ago, now they wanna put a capo in. Well, you built in the country. You're gonna have that. And so I think we gotta, and I like your idea, put that covenant with some of those titles. You build here, someday there may be a covenant here, there may be a capo here, you're nothing you can do about it. Because that would be fair to the farmer and the guy would know what he was getting into. That's my two.
With that, well, you too, I, I just said that three years ago, that we, we should end with that, just have it out in the water, yeah.
You know, I, I, I agree with the comprehensive plan approach, um, on a larger scale, I think solving the issue that is a constant issue in front of us, we can do now without, without changing, we, we would work within the confines of our comprehensive plan. And then future, we would make some changes, what I would foresee is, is let's say we did the one acre, two acres, quarter, quarters. Down the road, we would, we would look at a holistic approach of the county, we would look at population density, we would look at north on eighty-one, just on top of Poverty Valley, we'd say, okay, there's already a concentration of homes here. Maybe we somehow promote that that's where, where there's already a concentration, that's where you want people, rather than breaking up herds and going. But so then you can read, that's when you do the comprehensive plan, we truly look at some new districts, games, so. But I think for today, we can make a change and move on.
I agree with your words, what you're saying exactly. The problem is that somebody always finds this little piece of dirt way out, you know, nowhere that they want to build a house. Right, and that's when they come in, you know, like me, I'm kind of virtually way back, started out like the developer, or had to be a quarter section of land and then you develop and build all the infrastructure and stuff, and couldn't go building a house outside of that until that was full, and all planned and everything ready to go, and then they had them in. But, but you say, I agree, that whole area, everybody likes to live there, it's close to towns, good road to get there, uh, facilities and stuff, others is probably water. It's just the fact that nobody wants to build on a hill to see over the top of the guy's hole.
Well, yeah, what's the fun in looking at the highway?
Right.
That's not fun.
No. So.
You're in a no fun zone right there.
I mean, so you look at.
Yeah, let's keep going for it, please. Side fifteen.
Well, I think it's worth a change on us, first if you had an exception.
Right.
Right. That the site, that the sewer disantier drainage systems must be installed, shall be installed by a licensed installer and should comply with all applicable South Dakota D E N R regulations, so that's a part of the law now, we're just updating our ordinance to make that in our ordinance. So we can go to the next part, five seventeen. Traffic visibility.
Well, on that first, first one in the present, we did, I visited with NR C D about the tree planting. Their rule is seventy-five, right away. Snow load.
How?
Overgrowth of trees and stuff like that into the right way, that they, they won't find any trees, they don't allow any trees to plant on their process.
Well, then we gotta change fifty, seventy-five.
Right.
Instead of fifty.
The original, the original times that I remember the discussion we had on this one of the hay bales and all that stuff that were allowed down the north and the west side of the road. But in these drought and these, tell me the one, hundred rolls, whatever, it's no movement, it's a pad, a ball, we're having our.
Right.
So that's why they made the rule that had to be off, I don't remember, whatever it was, it's first. Doesn't prove you sure where you wanna call, you know, the veil for these guys as well. And the veil, but they had the rule that they weren't.
Okay, so you wanna leave it at fifty or ninety?
No, I think it was on five.
Yeah.
Close seventy-nine.
I, I don't really have a problem with it, I guess I, I can go either way. But I, I guess I haven't, I haven't seen any issues with, with being at fifty B.
I think it's thirty unless it's a, uh, major artery, right? Arterial highways intersecting with other arterial highways are fifty, otherwise it's thirty.
What you've got.
So I would be fine with seventy-five, like, you're talking like forty-six and eighty-one, seventy-five, what, even though I have a stop sign there now, but.
But there, you know, especially, you know, there's still a lot of old established ones that are out there that are like, both the road, depending upon intersection or where it's. Thirty mark and the stop signs are off. But loop planting, I mean, this pre deals with loop planting, shelter belts or anything placed closer to the road that could become an obstacle.
Well, well, it says bale down agricultural products, so.
Very good trees.
Well, bale, bale down, I mean, that's eight, I was.
We, we have one in our area that's, it's a rubber tree. It's very interesting, so, but it's established on the inside.
Well, it's been fifty feet for a long time.
It's a tree zone, I guess it's a.
All right, so we're gonna leave it at fifty, we're gonna take seventy-five.
I'll take seventy-five if that's required.
The tree, yeah.
If you look at the minimum yard required, it depends.
This is specific to the.
Obstructions.
To the traffic visibility.
Well, just, I don't know what, what, what's the second and third order of facts to something like this? I mean, it hasn't, it hasn't been an issue in the way I read that and talks about bale agricultural products, if you go and bale hay and it's what it's, right now it's fifty and you, you have hay fifty feet from the road, technically you're in violation of five seventeen.
Where, where did it change? When did it change? Because the original intent was that you could, you could turn the veils on the right way, but just like the state when they baled the nearest state.
Yeah, it's kind of been out there.
In the state, and you, you know, back from the front of the bushel, it had to be on right. Before, because I remember when I was going, I needed to walk, climb, with the orange flag, it couldn't get moved. But it was mostly for tourists, that was, that was actually on the west and north side of the road.
It's only applied, I mean, this doesn't apply if you're in the middle of your section, you have bales, this only applies to that corner.
It doesn't really say that corner though, Joe, it just says the right way, so it could be anywhere.
Well, with you and the dig, the traffic visibility.
Well, I understand. It should say at the intersection.
I'm fine just leaving it as it is, that's a good issue. Gives people an extra twenty-five feet. So if we change this, then we're gonna have to change the visibility trying to. I, I guess I, I would just leave it how it is.
No, I asked Mike about it, he definitely doesn't want it less.
No.
I think comes an issue we can always look at it then. I do, I do like our number three, the structures, pretty much similar, like, like vegetation, um, you know, permission from the zoning industry, I think that does need to be. I would agree with that.
I think. After we cross it off here though, and then it starts with no, and then we have such crossed up.
No.
No vegetation.
I think we need to put no perennial vegetation or something.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Like we talked before, that's.
Yeah, no, it's. So you'd say no perennial.
They, they shouldn't be planting corn right away, if, if, you know. And, and it does happen, guys are planting corn right away.
Yeah, according to this, though, you could, you couldn't plant corn with up to fifty feet from your, right away. It's a vegetation.
It's vegetation.
The intent is no shrub, the trees, you know, permanent.
Right.
So I think we need to put no, uh, no perennial.
I'm fine, I'm fine with it saying no perennial vegetation.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
All right, so are we leaving it at fifty on number one or are we taking it to seventy-five?
I'd say fifty just because it hasn't been a problem.
Fifty's good.
I, I like fifty.
Leave it at fifty.
We would, that'd be, but now we have to find both of the seventy-five.
Right, and then we're adding perennial between no and vegetation. Five eighteen. Animal feeding operations and capos are required to obtain a state general permit for the South Dakota D E N R that outlines the newer management practices that an operator must follow to prevent water pollution and protect public health. This permit must be obtained prior to the county application for a C O P, Commissional Use Permit. Applicants must have a South Dakota Environmental Training Certificate for capos. Animal feeding operations below five hundred animal units are not required to obtain a state permit or an environmental certification from South Dakota D E N R. And then it has the listing for how many, between the different species, cows, horses, dairy cattle, rare finish, swine, and there's, the whole table is in there again about.
Is that the same?
Yes.
Is that the same as the one in the definition?
It's the same as before. So you just want a list at the top for a header above where it says one cow means it's one animal unit.
Animal unit.
Sure.
Can we can we put a a qualifying statement there that says the following chart will will be used for animal unit calculation or something to kind of introduce it so it's not just hanging out there?
Yes, I think that's an excellent idea.
What did you say, Greg? That was good. The following chart?
Uh, the following chart will be used for animal unit calculation is what I said.
Good.
Uh, my uh uh the next chart, I I would, my thought was to have a a kind of a statement there too that says that the following chart determines determines class for animal feeding operations. Otherwise, it's, you know, the same thing. It's just kind of hanging out there.
Good idea.
I think that makes sense. I would I would call it table one and table two.
What did you say, Greg? The following chart will be used for what was that?
Sure, point out two and one.
I just said the following chart determines class for animal feeding operations is what I wrote, just scribbled down here, but just something to introduce it.
Following chart to determines the.
Classicate, class or classification for animal feeding operation.
Yep.
Feel free to change it. That's my thought.
You know, on the on the second page of the first one we went through, above that, on that header, it has animal, you know, so you don't benefit for life. They equated it as five. It's actually on the second page, the first chart we were doing earlier. It actually has that header on.
Yeah, yeah, that's a definite issue with the definition.
Right. But I mean, it has it on.
Yeah, didn't we talk about that? You got to put that that right, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah.
I guess if we we start putting that definition in there, are we gonna put all of it definitions in there? I don't know. I think.
We're gonna record charging.
I'm I'm fine with it.
Why can't you just put that on that? Say that around the back of that.
I I think it's a definition and I'm fine with that.
I mean.
I'm fine with that.
All right, so it has classes defined for animal units once again. And then it says below fifty animal units and not to exceed two hundred total animals, no conditional use is required. Above two hundred animal units will be assigned to the appropriate class of.
Shouldn't that be total animals, two hundred total animals?
Sure.
And the green, the green wording there, shouldn't that say?
That's on the green, the green line, second paragraph. Second paragraph.
Yeah, two hundred chickens, then you gotta give us, then you gotta give a C O P.
But it says animal unit.
Two hundred and one.
What's one animal unit now? So.
Yeah.
I mean, according to the power zoning is right now, if you get, yeah, thirty thirty hens, C O P. So I mean, this is.
This is an increase. Okay, animal feeding operations and CAFOs shall submit an annual waste management system plan and specifications for review prior to the conditional use hearings and a notice of completion or a certificate of compliance after construction to the South Dakota D E N R or as amended by the State of South Dakota or the South Dakota Department of Environmental and Natural Resources. Okay, prior to construction, that's language we already have in there. Animal feeding operations and CAFOs shall submit the following facility management plan prior to the application for conditional use. Examples of such management shall include, but are not limited to, A, proposed maintenance of animal feeding operations and CAFOs and waste facilities. B, proposed detailed maintenance plan of waste facilities. C, land application process and or methods. D.
So, so can I can I step in on C there? Does that mean land application of manure?
Yes.
Should that be stated? I don't know if it's that I don't know if it's that obvious there. I don't.
That's probably a good question.
Talking about the the waste management plan.
So, yeah, but his point is he's we should probably specify that and it's a good point. Do you want to say like land manure application or what do you want to say there, Greg?
That's fine. That works. It was something. Just just more definition. There's a land and yeah.
Where do you want to put that, Greg? We're all just sitting waste.
C, three C.
So it should say land manure application process and or methods. Correct, Greg?
I I agree with that. It's how it just defines it more. You know, if you're reading this.
Makes sense.
I'm 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 reading this as somebody doesn't know anything about any of this, trying to make sure it makes sense and that just doesn't make that statement. Just doesn't.
It makes it clearer.
I I would agree with that change.
Okay, D, legal description and map including documented proof of area to be utilized for nutrient application. Other requirement as described by the zoning administrator, foundation mission and or board of adjustments.
Should probably be other requirements.
Yeah, I believe so.
And then D, when it says nutrient application, are we talking about manure again there too?
Yes.
All right, we're not talking about, we're not talking about vitamins, vitamins and minerals, right? We're talking about manure. So what, you know, I don't know, somebody's idea of a nutrient might be different.
Then the D E N R calls it a nutrient management plan.
Right.
So that's why they.
But. Well, that's fine. Then we need to use the same. Every time we talk about manure, we need to say nutrient then in every one of these because if it's if it's one way in one letter and another way in another letter, it doesn't make sense, you know? It just doesn't. It's not consistent. And then it's
Do you want to do?
Right for discussion.
Do you want to just change it to to be utilized for manure application and keep it consistent with what's above, Greg?
That that works for me. That works for me.
Just put manure. And strike the.
Just trying to take away all the reasons why somebody could argue about something here, if that's possible.
Good point.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Well, like I said, if it's possible, I'd be.
Well, Dan, Dan, I would I would say we should straighten waste in every one of these because manure is not waste.
Well, there you go.
If you've got proposed beta, they have a big operation, cause created animal feeding operations and waste facilities. Well, that should be manure facilities.
There you go.
That's different now because D E N R calls it a waste facility.
They also call it a nutrient application of your country. We're splitting hairs here.
Let's just us be consistent so that we know what we we're talking about and at least we'll be consistent. It doesn't have to always match what everybody else, you know what I mean? That's my thought anyway.
Good idea, good idea.
Okay, I think I assume it's in there. They need to specify. They need to specify the class, state environmental trades to CAFOs class.
I think we we put that in the opening paragraph. Um, that.
Yeah, we did.
And and so I I agree, this is what I thought.
Want to repeat it.
Well, basically what we came down to is we wanted to have the smaller operations not have to follow, you know, the D E N R permitting and whatever. So we put that all in the first paragraph. And then we we basically said, you know, five hundred animal units and below don't have to follow all that.
That's right.
And I guess that's that's what we we decided last time, but it.
No, that's fine.
Yeah.
It was the animal.
All right. New animal feeding operations, new CAFOs and waste facilities shall be setback. That's all from before.
Well, there we did have.
They only change. But not less than those. And that was part of our ordinance to. We can mandate setbacks greater but not less than those required herein to further the intended zoning ordinance while protecting the public health and safety and welfare. Public health, safety and welfare. Period. New animal feeding operations, CAFOs and waste facilities shall be located no closer than the following regulations describe distance from any class one, class two or class three incorporated municipality, active church or established R one, R two or R three residential area or residential dwelling as shown on the official zoning map. So the change there is they just compiled a whole bunch of of tables together in that paragraph rather than having it in every single section. So we're trying to simplify the ordinance and put it all together in one paragraph rather than restating the same information through.
And uh, you know, when we hit to the table, I, you know, I know we were trying to adapt the one by the lake, but I I guess I don't know what people's thoughts are. Maybe keeping um class A at like two miles and like class B at like one, one mile. I mean, four miles is quite a ways.
Be the way you just. I think it's fine what it was. I think we stick with the the numbers that we had to class, class A and class B.
Everybody.
Well, I mean, at at four wild, if you're giving us anything, we can sign with ten thousand every developing use.
Well, some some counties just outlaw, you can go five thousand.
Yeah, that should basically will be done.
Well, you know, I guess it maybe it's worth some discussion about, you know, maybe moving those back a little bit even to, because it's it's four miles in South fifty and it's two miles everywhere else. Who's put the different rule, you know, three miles or or keep it as two or I I don't know, uh. You know, I I'm I'm open to ideas in this.
I think it worked for the last seven years according to.
So the class F is much more. Class F worked for the last seven years.
I'd I'd be okay with, you know, I I let's just put a pin in that. I'd be okay with like moving that to maybe like three.
Could I say it was two miles here?
Well, it's two miles there and it's four miles. And I think we use the the table by the lake for this one. So I guess I'm.
What is what is the.
I'm sure.
Approximately.
Do you know, Gary?
Not for me.
No, it's not. Okay, one mile, it's only like one.
About a one, one and a half and then where you're at. And then it's refuge and stuff.
No.
No. I can imagine that for the safety of others. There's no discussion.
Yes.
But I at the Monday United poll up the lake area and there's only about I don't think there's six hundred acres of egg left in this area.
Well, I was thinking the origin of the four, you get a mile off of that for the city, then you have three. In that area anyway, you're the most sure you're pressed for part five.
So I'd I'd be okay with. I mean, I'd be okay with three of them and then go on three, two, one. Everybody else is okay with that.
Say again, Dan, please.
For class A, I guess I would be okay with lowering that if we would want to go from, I know it's um in part of our zoning ordinance, it's four now. And lowering that to three um for class A. You know, we haven't had any problems with class A operations, you know, five hundred to ten thousand. Um, three miles is a pretty good setback. Um, that was just a thought I had. Are they?
Four and two is good.
I think we looked at that one time. Um. There's hardly any place in the air can tell me if you can build anything. I think there was one area.
There's like a couple of them hard there.
I was saying leave it. Yeah.
What what was that name?
I was saying just leave it how it is today.
One.
Yeah, we made it.
I I think the.
Right, I don't I don't. Either.
I can I can go along with that.
Four and two. What is it?
Just me too late one point.
Two miles is now as far as that in the.
Oh, I mean, that's what it is now. And we haven't had a huge problem with classes. I guess, you know, we gotta compromise where we can. Um, I don't know.
I think those kinds of things need to be looked at a little bit closer because you see, actually, when they're saying they all said just throw out a number, I think it's I think it's a little uh presumptuous on our part that I I really think change that we really need to look and see where it's done graphically without it fit. We don't want to be anything to sell it.
Leave it.
Leave it as is or?
Leave it. Four and two.
Yep.
Yeah, leave it alone.
Four and two. All right.
And where and where it says private well, private well operators over on the left and then also the one with the lakes ending with fisheries, we should probably add the feet that if those are in feet um in in parentheses.
Good catch.
Yep.
And then the other ones, Greg, we put put mile.
Yeah, put miles on the first.
Where's two lines?
It is miles. It's all there except for the the one.
Okay, yeah, there it is. Every other one, it kind of does.
Yeah.
So you're talking private well, parentheses feet, private well operators, parentheses feet, and then makes rivers, streams classify as fisheries feet. So three of those.
Right. Yeah.
True.
Good chat, Greg.
Okay. Next page.
I'll form this one here. They just don't bear up like all the other lines.
Okay, this is a change. An owner of a residential dwelling made request that the setbacks to their dwelling be permanently waived. Residential waiver request forms are attainable from the zoning administrator and must be filled in prior to the conditional use application. This waiver shall permanently run with the land and be filed with the Anken County Register.
Maybe that's good.
Yeah.
Now, that's an improvement of what what they have have now, so.
All right, and then number eight. Animal waste can be transported no further than five miles from the point of origination. That's original text. Animal waste called within non-application or transportation equip equipment should be restricted as to distance. The next phrase goes along with recent law changes in the legislature to comply with that. It says manure pipes or lines shall not be placed in public residence. And then it just goes on to say methods of transportation must comply with federal, state, local, block, load limits on roads, bridges and all other similar structures. So that is going along with current changes in law. That's reason for that change. Number nine, animal feeding operations and CAFOs and waste facilities, child and parent facility management plan. So this. language, just we rearranged it so that the manure language was with the manure parts of the ordinance. So it's not so much repetition as the way it is written out. The plan shall address how it responsibly exposes of dead animals, manure and wastewater in such a manner as control odors, flies, broken trees and protecting. Special emphasis shall place on protecting both groundwater and surface water. The county planning commission and board of adjustment will review the need for control measures on a site specific basis. Taking into care of consideration prevailing wind direction, floodplains, aquifers, water, surface water protection and topography. And topography, period. The following procedures shall complete, shall be completely addressed in a management control plan. A. An operational plan for manure collection, storage, treatment and use shall be kept updated and implemented. Nutrient management plans must be submitted and approved by a sub county DNR prior to the county permit application. Nutrient management plan lists all fields and acres that are in the nutrient management plan and shall include expected manure application rates. All land in the nutrient management plan that is not owned by the applicant shall have manure easements completed prior to the county permit application. An operational plan for the prevention of both groundwater and surface water contamination. C, the methods utilized to dispose of dead animals shall be identified and shall be in compliance with the South Dakota Animal Industry Board. The detailed plan for carcass disposal should be a part of the application. D, an operational plan to prevent spread of infectious disease to other facilities and a biosecurity plan. E, screening and buffering section to include planting trees and shrubs and adequate sized control wind movement and expression of odors generated by the facility and order footprint model shall be used. An odor management plan shall include biofilters, tenatives or other odor reductions technologies.
No, wait a second, I thought we scratched that shell. On the, on the, what we've gone through, we've discussed this before. Because we, we discussed that equipment, so.
Yeah.
May, I think is the word. We put in that.
Which one, which one are we on?
We're on, uh.
E.
E.
E. Okay, if you put in May, or take out shell, what happens if a person puts down nothing?
Yeah, they don't want to do it. There's nothing that's required, why are we putting it in?
It's not required.
It's not changed among.
No, I don't agree with that.
Well, it gives you options or other odor reductions.
Shit, no, it says odor management plan shall include biofilter, pick attitude.
Or, or other management strategies, so.
In other words, they get their choice of what to do.
They have a choice, but you need to do something.
But they have to do something.
Have to do something, but you have choices. Or.
That must, I, 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 I see I agree with there, but I remember one other time that we scratched that shell.
That wasn't there though, because I don't have the line.
I've never, we've never just not, scratch it here, Zane, since I've been here, I've only been here two and a half months.
Not, not on that one, we did on manure.
No, ten years.
Manure, uh, spread or injecting, but not here.
That's why it was four.
Yeah, no, I, I don't have a problem with that. The only thing that I'm a little confused on here.
Alright.
Um, so what class are we talking about?
We're talking about the bigger operations.
But, but is that, is that actually, um, what, 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 we don't have that defined to say this pertains to class F and above.
It'd be all the ones that stink. I like what Greg said, anything that stinks has got to do something. Yeah, any, anything that smells.
I, I did try and clarify that.
No, I, I mean, really, it should, I mean, they, they should have, uh, they should have to plant trees or something, even if it's a smaller side, I would think.
But, but then the guy from zero to 200 animals couldn't run everything in the correct?
No, that's why they come, that's why they come with the CP.
No, they don't have to.
Well, under 200.
Under 200 doesn't.
Just like now.
They gotta come up with it.
No, they don't have to do nothing.
But if they're a good neighbor, they'll do something.
Where this starts on, on the, at least to me, I, I don't see this starts at class C, D, E, F, G, whatever. That, that's what I'm looking for a little clarification, because we've got a lot of guys that are gonna fall into this 500 debt that is proposed. And so it's gonna affect a lot of people, um, so I think it really needs to be clarified.
For new operations, right? This is all for new operations, this isn't old ones.
Oh, I, I know that.
They can smell.
Let's say, say there's a young guy sitting in this crowd that wants to build a, on, on some of their, uh, land. He has to know where he has to be and what he has to do to start. See what I'm saying? I, I.
That's right.
We're thinking we need to talk it over and over that we need to go through and identify which paragraph we just have.
Okay, well, and that's why.
I, well, I guess I don't, I don't see why having, you know, even the smaller ones have a screen or a section. You know, it basically says or, or other odor reduction technologies. Is that, so that's where the finding, well, and just like we did Joe on that, that nursery running, we're bringing up in Jamesville. We required like two rows of trees.
I think what they put is we crossed off which section applied which animal classes, and we have redefined it.
Right.
I, I guess, I would, I would think that most of, you know.
All CUP.
Yeah, and even that has a CUP even right now, who has to follow that. I mean, I think there should be a screening section, and you know, a bigger operation is gonna have more of a frame than a smaller one, one of less. But, but I mean, really, that's up to the planning commission and the board of adjustments that use a good judgment and determine what's.
So anybody who's gonna build a new class, uh, the class, whatever it is, is a class F, but it's 500 and above? Is that what it is now, or 200 and above, I mean, 200 animals, it's gonna have to have a B in our program.
Five, five, over 500. Over 500, class B and up is, is the, the.
Over 500.
Committee.
Okay. I didn't see that clarification.
It does say, um.
Did you say in terms of 500 and up, we say, we say, you can say general.
It said the very beginning of section 59.
And don't identify this class B as F. What paragraph?
Says over the class of.
I guess, what, what would be appropriate for class B and F? I, I think there should be some sort of screen. You know, it's not telling you what you have to do, it's just saying.
Well, that's the question is, isn't, once it's up to what, the question is, what, does this apply to all of them?
Right, I would say that's my question. I would say.
Why shouldn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I'm just, so, so everybody is, is clear on it, that's all I, all I'm asking is clarification of what is proposed.
Okay, so would it help if we put the chart in there and say, these are the ones that qualify?
Well, at one time we had actually talked about having some kind of a chart like that, the chart, you know, and it gets, gets to be a lot of chart. I think at the very least, it should say all
this section applies to all.
It does, it does say that, all animal feeding operations and.
Oh, that's cross, cross.
All, that's all cross, cross. There we go, that's why I said. Like one per page.
Well, it, it actually says, you know, right, right here on nine, animal feeding operations and one six, waste facilities.
How do I know I need to? Retain the, or that here, there, that nine.
Right. I mean, that should, you didn't read every document, interpret it.
What do you, what do you guys propose? Should we say, should we say?
For all day, I'm just saying, all he's saying is.
No, that's a good point, that's a good point. Uh, should we say?
You can't just say all in front of number nine.
Or we should, or we say animal feeding operations above 49 animal units and concentrated in animal feeding operations and waste facilities. And then that would encompass all of them. For all of them with a CP.
Did you give us some clarification is all I'm asking.
No, that's a good, that's a good point.
No, that's a good idea.
They were suggesting, why wouldn't we just need to word all?
Just leave all.
Not enough, what do you think?
So add all of the number nine.
Are you talking?
Because they're not saying all of them need a CP, they're talking about the, the manure management plan, which is what you're talking about. Smaller operations don't have to do any planning whatsoever.
Any, all of 200 animals.
So we're asking them to do it.
I just, I just, I, I think that it'll, it'll be a question that a lot of farmers will ask me, who will want to know. And, and I, and I think for them to be informed, because there's been some confusion with one chicken, you know, you know all that story. And, and so we just, they'll need to know that if they have 49 animal units or more than 200 animals, they will have to get a CUP and do go through every one of the.
No. They don't have to get a CUP until you've got 500 animals. But you do have to have a manure management plan and figure out what you're gonna do with your dead animals and these types of things. This is not CUP. Oh, it is a CUP, I'm sorry, it's not D and R. It is a CUP, you're correct.
We're talking about this one. Um, and that, that's probably, I hope that part of it, problem, but, and that works, gonna affect a lot of young guys that, that do want to get into livestock at a small scale. They, they, they just, we just need to know, and their dads need to know what they're up against, and how they feel about it.
And that was something that I brought up, what one of the changes, because this is all, it reads to me, it's very confusing because we're moving stuff around, but if you look at five 19. We got a facility management plan to address, uh, dead animals, manure, wastewater and control odors. And then I think we've got dead animals, yeah.
Yeah, I see that too, and.
Or that's just over, okay, yeah, no, I see.
I think that's.
79, B, 49, uh.
C is the standard for in the animal industry. Which they have to follow, I mean, you have to follow that even if, even if you're not.
Right.
Everybody has to follow that. Definitely, then this would be smaller operations, they have to follow animal industry for.
True, true.
Disposal ring.
C will. Or you have the, the rest of the response to dispose of that animal. According to the, the, the animal industry. Somehow they could be all of them together and not have to. I see what it's, nine is basically giving an overview of what's found in nine and then A, B, C, D, F. Cause I think before, that's what was, before there was paragraph A might talk about it, and then it was in 10, C.
That's kind of how, um, 59, they're like 10. He is right now, you know, because it goes over in similar, similar.
And one other thing that just, if, if this is just striking me, one time, Joe, we, you and I have discussed this with, uh, gray water coming out of the pool and being irrigated, rushing the door, is that coming in this thing, we talked about it?
Yeah, it's in here.
Is it coming later?
Coming, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Point's down, just keep going.
No, I, no, I, it was something that.
Okay, G is the same, for water management section. H, solid and liquid manure storage plan, using the number and size of containment areas and methods of controlling drainage with an emphasis on minimizing odor, odor production. I, road hall routes and road hall agreements with the road authority to minimize damage to infrastructure shall be included in the CUP, okay? Next. The description of the method, I think that's the same. L is the next, it's.
That's where, that's where you're talking about. Yeah, we, we want to go to the notification, the spread order should, unless I said no shell, okay?
So that's where the shales change, and there's no one down there that changed. Alright, I'll read through L, notification section. Shall be formulated by the county. It is to include. It is to include the names, addresses, phone numbers, all of the stuff that's in there before. Um, and then at the bottom, it says complaints could, rather than shall, lead to having to give a 48 hour notice in advance of manure applications, annual notification of coming 30 day window should be given, alright, so we took some shells out of there, maybe I should. Nine A.
Is that really an A?
Hmm. What?
Is that really nine A? I don't, doesn't make sense there.
Yeah, maybe we turn that into 10 and then 10 and do, that would make more sense.
Yeah, that's.
But we, we just, we just gone through nine A through, through M, and now we've got a nine A.
Yeah, we should make it 10, and it should be 11 to the chart. Did you catch that?
Yep.
All of them. Number 10, an operational plan for manure collection, storage, treatment and use should be kept updated and implemented. The nutrient management plan will list all fields and acres that are in the nutrient management plan but is not owned by the applicant shall have manure easements completed prior to the county permit application. Number 11.
Are we sure that is nine?
Want it to be nine N, because it has to do with manure, makes us.
Yeah.
That'll be it.
No, I don't know, it's all about.
That's fine.
The next one, the next one's tied for not manure, so what do you want to do with it?
Yep.
As N or change it to 10?
Yeah.
Nine N, what we're calling it.
Alright.
Just N.
And now this is back to 10, the chart. Manure generated from animal feeding operations and KOs should not be applied to frozen or snow covered ground and must comply with following manure application setback forms. And then it goes through all of the setbacks for public, private wells, lakes, rivers and streams, lakes, rivers and streams that are fisheries, right of ways, municipalities, residential zones, residents, operators and 100 year floodplain is.
You know, some of these changes, I don't necessarily agree with, but especially don't be, uh, public driveways. Going from 10 to 30, what? Four and ten, the thirty foot, anything is peaceful, nobody's gonna move in there.
What's that, Joe? I can't hear you, sorry.
The, uh, we moved application for injection or incorporated from ten foot to thirty foot away from the right of way. And nobody knows why we put it in there.
I, I'm, I'm fine with leaving it at ten.
Okay, we'll leave it at ten.
Unless somebody has an issue with that, thirty, ten. I, I see that we probably have feet on there too.
I noticed that too, yeah.
Yep.
Just put it in the, put it up with Bob. Provide, probably with manure application requirements in feet, four foot feet behind everyone.
I'll just do that.
What do you want to do?
I'll just add feet to all of them like the other chart.
All right.
All right. Is everything that was put into the table?
Surface supply that put them to, I guess, would have. Surface supply manure, thirty foot, it doesn't show a change here, but I think it was.
I can go along with that.
I never get it to cross, no. Or, or am I, are you on a mixtape?
No, I, it doesn't show there's change, but I think it was.
What, what about?
I revision.
What about irrigated?
Irrigated, I find what leaves, you know, not going on that, but I, I would just leave it.
So you, you want public driveway injected and incorporated with twenty-four hours and surface is required from thirty to ten, to where it was.
Right.
I can, I can relate to that.
You say that again.
Uh, injected or incorporated, uh, manure within twenty-four hours for all public road right of ways. Right now we have thirty and Joe proposed to reduce that to ten uh, for both injected and surface applied.
Okay.
I think that's reasonable. I would, we need an area for this, I think, uh.
Oh, I think that was part of the point before. Okay, with injuries and irrigated and some from a dent, so I just.
What's that, a hundred?
All right, irrigation is used for watering a loo or a gray water basin, these rules apply. And the rules are the same as they were in the. Drops must be used on systems that disperse the liquid from higher than eighteen inches off the ground. If the crop has actively grown in the field, the liquid must be dispersed below the crop camping, no runoff or defuse spray from the system into neighboring property or public right of way. No irrigation of liquid on frozen ground or S, F, S, A designated wetlands. No big gun type of irrigation system. Will be used for liquid manure or the watering lagoons or other manure improvement systems. And eighteen, all new, all liquid manure shall be injected to provide for better agronomic benefits and to reduce the potential for runoff and minimize odor. Liquid manure may be surface applied, is approved by the state DNR for emergency discharge only. And we went into great depth about, you know, the unusual, never before seen circumstances of last year's flooding. Living in a lawsuit. Documentation or state approval shall be maintained by the CAFO operator and be available upon request by the. Section five twenty. Conditional use permit for animal feeding operation or CAFO and or waste facilities is not permitted if applicant applies for the permit for the purpose of selling, transferring or brokering the permit. And that language was in there. So the only change is they added CAFO in there rather than just CAFO and, and or waste facility. The board of adjustment shall not grant a conditional use permit for the animal feeding operation, CAFO and/or waste facilities if the applicant is applying for the permit for the purpose of selling, transferring or brokering the permit. For the purposes of this ordinance, any sale or transfer of the permit from the applicant to any other person or entity within five years of the date the permit is issued shall be considered prima facie evidence that such permit was obtained for the purpose of selling, transferring or brokering. So that change is from two to five years, that is the change. Two or more facilities under common ownership shall be considered a single operation and shall comply with all applicable setbacks as described here. Two or more facilities that use a common system or area for manure disposal shall be considered a single operation. Any evidence that is made by any person that a building permit and or conditional use permit for animal feeding operation or CAFO and/or waste facilities was sought for the purpose of selling, transferring or brokering the permit shall be considered by the zoning administrator planning condition and or board of adjustment and considering a new application for a conditional use permit. Period. It may be the basis for denial or revocation, revocation of the application, building permit and or conditional use permit by the board of adjustment. In other words, if you break the law and then you come back and ask for another permit, they're going to take that in pursuit. That is the.
I think the paragraph about the two under common ownership, is that misplaced? I, I don't think that fits in this section, does it?
Well, that was in there before.
Under the common.
Yeah, they, they talked about that.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, that's, that's not, they're just changing the number of years before they have to. Consider, yeah, to be a little schooly about.
The big asset is that paragraph is supposed to be in this section.
Yeah, exactly, that's exactly what I'm asking. I don't think it's, it talks about setbacks.
I don't think it adds anything.
Talks about setbacks in manure disposal, I don't think that's really under this section, so.
Shouldn't that go with the manure spreading?
It, it might be a duplicate on back the other side.
No, it's not a condition of CAFO.
Yeah.
Let me pray to the definition.
Yeah.
Probably fine, but.
The original, the original ones that two or more facilities under common ownership are single animal operation if they join each other within one mile or if they use a common area or system. That's the original. Then under that, this two or more facilities under common ownership shall be considered a single operation. Two or more facilities under common system or area. Shall be considered a single operation that was scratched under animal feeding operation.
Yeah, it's not in the last section. It's not in the brokering part of the original. Yeah, we can scratch that. It just must have got added in there.
I think it's just a cotton paste thing, I, I think, is all.
It's in, it's in the order, it's, like you said, we've already gone through that part in there.
We're gonna scratch that?
Yeah, it doesn't need to be said again.
That's what I thought. Good. One thing about, on, on these, uh, of these transfers, uh, do we need to put in something on the case, in the case of death? I mean, if, 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 say, if I built, built one of these and within a year all of a sudden, unfortunately, I was killed in a truck.
Well, I think that would be taken into consideration.
Well, I mean, I, I, I don't know.
Because, I mean, we had people come in who were building permits because, I mean, their spouse died and you gave them an extension. That's kind of the same type of thing. This is different. This is somebody that goes and gets a CAFO permit.
I, I know, and I know exactly where to say that.
I'm, I'm sure that they would take a death penalty into consideration when they're talking about selling.
Okay. Or, so, uh, sell it to another whole entity.
Right.
And then would it have to go through a whole new CUP, you know, process of, for when the existing one? Was the existing one all of a sudden pretending?
Uh, I think this paragraph would apply to the original owner, if they passed that.
It's a different ownership, it's different ownership, yeah. So I don't think that's eventually, that this would come.
No, why?
That this is just scripted.
The only time that maybe it would is if you, uh, if you became this age or something. Then you would, then you'd be transferred.
I mean, I understand.
Yeah, they would take that.
But then what things point to is, I feel like. That don't do all, and they just, give it, that just, okay, build a building. And die a year later, die a year later. And then, because somebody has to get sold, or get sold to Zane.
Right, but I don't think you planned on dying.
No, I know, I think, but, but, I understand that, but, but, but what you were talking about was just because I'm, I'm selling, or they're selling, my beneficiaries are selling that unit, that permit, so all the restrictions that were placed on that CUP are tied to that facility. Because that person had to come back in and reapply for a CUP on that facility first. To say the CUP followed the. That's right, that's what I'm saying.
And that's what I was wondering, that's.
The only time it wouldn't is if you didn't have, if you were not, if you were a grandfather.
Grandfather, they didn't have one.
That would be the time, but if it's long to get a valid CUP at the time. Which is probably grand for. Does that mean the bank cap for both for your first five years?
What's that?
That mean the bank cap for both for your first five years?
Have to take that up with the bank. Okay. All right, so we went through the whole thing, now we've got the time, um, for public comment. And this, would you like to read the list and they can come up one by one?
Are we gonna?
What? I think that was the whole idea of going through, obviously. Hold on, all right. And so we're just go through and vote to approve the changes that we just made.
We have to.
I think we can go through what we already have and agree to what we have to vote in.
I, I, you know, I guess there, there's other proposals out there, I think as a board we need to decide, you know, are we gonna continue with this? Are we gonna do a different proposal? I mean, are we gonna start it over? I mean, I think we, as a board, need to decide the direction that we want to head with this.
With all the different proposals. Uh, that'll, that'll probably continue on, on till the end of time.
Yeah, we, we study them.
I guess, I think, you know, we need to get public, um, comment on that and that really happens, you know, at the hearing stage, you know, and that the only way we're gonna get to have public comment is sometimes remove this on and maybe, maybe somebody has a great idea that we never thought about. It's us to go and, and change. So we get public comment on it.
Can we, can we, can we get comments? Can we get comments tonight? It sounds like there's people there and then, uh, we have a meeting tomorrow night, so we can take the next step tomorrow night, right? It's on the agenda, I believe.
No, like, no, it is. Per, per the state's attorney's guidance that he gave us, um, we get public comment at the hearing, so as I understand it, and Joe, you let tell me if I'm wrong, is we have to have a hearing noticed ten days ahead of time and then that's the time to get public comment on this, right?
What I, what I'm, what I'm, what, no, wait a minute, wait a minute. What I'm proposing, what I, what I wanted to say is, this, this is a working meeting, we've gone through it, we're ready. At the end, we usually ask for people's comments. And then tomorrow night, we can, as far as I'm saying, discuss it again tomorrow night as to what steps we want to take. I'm not proposing that we go to a hearing, official hearing, I'm just.
We have to have.
You understand what I'm saying?
It has to be on the agenda to actually have discussion back and forth.
No, it needs to be just, it's.
Right.
We're not, in other words, we're not, in other words, we're not, we're not on the agenda, so we can't do it.
Well, tomorrow night, we have this, on the agenda is discussion on possible ordinance changes, isn't it? On seven twenty-five, so can't we discuss it tomorrow night at seven twenty-five?
But probably, probably not everybody would, would know. I, I feel that somehow we need to get these, uh, proposed things that we're gonna talk about into the public's hands so they can sit there and study and read them, uh, because it's.
I agree.
Way too hard. It's hard enough for them to be listening out here and it's hard enough for us. We've got, we've got four different copies of all of them changes, so we need to start looking within one, two and three. Um, did you have to be able to read them and, and, and it takes a great length to read twenty pages of, of all these changes?
I agree a hundred percent, I agree a hundred percent.
I feel. And I don't know how we can do that.
Per the state's attorney's guidance, he said we should, uh, follow the procedure and that would be us forwarding this, having a hearing and that allows for public comment. Do you want to add anything to that, Billy?
No, that's, that's definitely the next step if we're not gonna make any more changes from here so that we don't get it to at least the July meeting.
Okay, so can we at least vote on whether we accept all of this work that we've come this far? Forward it to the next step and then we'll get more public input and, and at the public meeting where it's on the agenda and it's been properly noted. We're going to do this in the, the manner in which it's supposed to be done.
I think I think everybody's right. The state's attorney's advice is, yes, working sessions typically are working sessions. The intent is not to get public comment at every working session because you'd never get it set up. I think we're, we're. I think we're too, the, the process works when we feel we have something ready to move on and there's a majority vote to move it on, then that's all solidified into one document presented for the public's viewing for comment later on.
Right.
That's the intent. I, I see no issue with taking comment prior to that, so. We know it's a contentious issue, we know people have things to say, we've heard a lot. I'm guessing there's not gonna be a lot said that we haven't heard, but I, I would say it's up to about to you if we're gonna have public comment here on the meeting.
Well, first, I want to vote that we can move this forward and then I will let people come up and speak their piece. Because you deserve, you've been waiting, you deserve to speak your piece. We can't respond to it because we're the winner.
But what if we have a suggestion we want changed and the vote's already done that we are facing our side here?
No, because with the, the time where we can consider what you want changed is at the publicly noticed meeting. This is a working meeting here, the here, this isn't, this is a working meeting, technically, we're not. This isn't, this is a working meeting. Technically, we're not even supposed to be public input, but I don't think that that's fair. I want to hear what you have to say. And I want you to feel that you're part of the class.
Well, you know, I think, and I think we're at the crosshairs where we either, you know, take a step back and, and explore other options. We move forward with what we have, or, or some other choice, and, and I think that's the board. It's up to the board to decide that, but, but the time, the time, like you said, to have public comment is during the CUP process. And we can't have a hearing until at least we have something that we're proposing.
Wait, wait, wait. What, what is? I'm sorry, but I have to interject here. I can't stand it anymore. Why, what, what is different from tonight's working session that hasn't, that's, that, than, than the other working sessions? We've gone through this. We've discussed it. We've had people make comments because the chair has allowed it at the end, at the.
Yeah, that I got from the State's Attorney, that's, that's the, I mean, he suggested, because we had talked about getting public comment at county meetings, and he told us not to. He said, uh, the time for that is at, uh, the hearings. And so I guess.
Okay.
His, his guidance, uh.
We just found, we just found that out. We've been meeting on this for this many months, and we just found out that we, we shouldn't be taking public comment at working sessions? But we go, Pat, 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 let me finish. Let me finish. Pass that, pass that. What, the working sessions are just what they are. We go to the regular meeting, and then we decide what to take, what to do with the working session information. I think we shouldn't be voting on anything at the working sessions officially to, to move forward on anything. We should, tomorrow night, at our regular meeting, we should vote on what to do with the material that we've worked on. It's on the agenda, and that's the official place to do it, as far as, that's my opinion. And I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I agree with you, Greg. I, I don't think we should be voting at a working session if we're not gonna, I mean, we can't have it both ways.
No.
Right.
Is this, um, Ms. Lilly, are you still on? Yeah?
Yep, I'm here.
But what would your recommendation be to your State's Attorney, rather?
I believe that you've been allowing public comment, and since you have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, I haven't looked at the agenda to see whether or not you've noticed anything. But this is a working session, so I would not recommend taking any official action at this session.
Okay, but I can let people come up and speak.
You have, you have been allowing it, and so I, I think as long as I follow the guidelines that Commissioner Clemish um, read at the beginning of your meeting, um, if you've been allowing it, then I would continue to allow it.
And if they've been sitting here this long, they have a right to have something to say.
Yeah, can I just clarify something quick? And we can move on, hopefully. The difference, the only difference is if, if we felt we needed to vote on this tonight, we would have to vote and then take public comment, because that's probably a difference. We can close out our discussion, the public comment on it. It's on our agenda for tonight.
Yes.
So we can close out without voting, take public comment, and then tomorrow night, take action.
Right. Well, that'd be my last.
That would make sense.
To go ahead, go ahead with the proposed, and then we can have hearings, so we can hear forty of them during the time. Agreed.
Does that sound?
Right.
Does that sound okay on this one?
And Gary? Well, we have a new document from all the changes we made tonight for tomorrow?
For tomorrow?
Yeah.
Sir. You're not gonna have time to review them, though. That's the issue. I mean, I can certainly make the changes, but when are you gonna read them?
Right. Yeah, we do the same thing. We read, we read them at the beginning. We read the.
It really doesn't matter.
Yeah.
That's what you want to do. That's fine.
And I think also that, is we're getting this thing kind of heading to a correctional before we release any of these documents out to the public to get their hands on to.
They've already been released tonight.
I wind up, it's exactly where it is and none of it's scratched off.
Well, you can't do that, though, because you gotta show the changes, so. It has to, it has to be a document just like this.
And it does help sometimes that you see what is scratched. Um, I mean, it, we've done it a lot, and I, I, I would say it pretty well.
Especially if it was something that was being.
You're right. Yeah, that's the part that helped.
Okay. Gary, you have a device you can use time for, you'll need three minutes.
Sure.
Maybe my timer could. Okay, well, we started at the top of the list. Who's the first one?
Jim?
Was that Tom?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Okay, well, by the way, Rick Byes said he would see this three minutes for myself. So I started to buy, but I haven't had the chance to do this process in a different county. Realistically, you won't do a great job with this deal, but that takes eighteen months, because there's just too many what ifs and.
Yeah, you need to stay in the.
My goodness, Jim, you jerked that from Beagle and, uh, Barnet Clay in ancient times. Um, this is gonna, if you don't, if you do a good job, this will take eighteen months, just because when you change something, you gotta look at repercussions and how it affects the other sectors of your deal, and, uh, it's gonna take you some time. Um, yeah, I had a great point there. It's just, you need to put together case studies of what, how does this affect that? How does this affect that? We're in such uncharted water right now in the livestock business as far as producers not being able to market animals in a timely fashion, and so on and so forth, that crazy things are happening as far as people trying to make room for animals. And there needs to be some flexibility built into this deal to help alleviate disaster. Um, in terms of the subdivisions, in terms of building a home or rural residence, you know, if they're good, Dennis had a good point there, too. If they, if you're gonna build a new construction in a low-density ag district, they, it should be part of their obligation to handle part of the buffer themselves. My suggestion would be, if they're gonna build in that district, they need to own four neighbors, or they need to sign a right of farm plan. That way, that buffer is covered, because otherwise, they're putting a huge burden on the neighbors to do any future construction if that opportunity presents itself. So that would be something I would consider. Um, asking producers to do the manure management plan, facility management plan, environmental training, doorwork grant, and the overhaul study before they can be presented with a CUP is mission impossible. With any kind of track record as far as being friendly to livestock, and with all this pending litigation that's going on now, what young person is gonna spend thirty grand to get all that stuff done to come up here and get told no? So what needs to be done there, I think, is you grab a CUP pursuant to all of those processes being finished. That way, that kid knows he's got a chance, and maybe he'll feel like spending that money. So that would be another thing that I would seriously consider. Um, it said in the back that you're talking about nice manure, but DNR says that manure application on haymeadows is approved and appropriate use of liquid manure. So I guess in that section, I would like to know who defines the emergency? And if this is a producer's emergency, and the DNR says it's an appropriate use of manure, does he have to come in here and get approval? Or how does that gonna work? That scares me.
I'm waving my time to Jim.
So I'll talk slower now. At least, they set backs at three, two, and one miles. I mean, other than Gerald County, they would probably be the toughest in, the toughest, maybe the fourth, fifth toughest in the state. And what you're doing there, again, it's just like the step, this other setback deal as far as residential and so on and so forth. You're basically just saying, you have to be the wealthiest guy in the county, or the largest landlord in the county, if you're ever gonna do any livestock at all, then. I mean, I've spent a lot of money the last few years making sure that I don't have anybody without half a mile game, and it costs a lot of money, and I have to pay cash, and it's, it's really rampant by style, I'll be honest with you. I mean, it's challenging times in agriculture, so to think that somebody's gonna be able to put together that kind of landmass, or, or those kind of relationships, just to be able to get that done, I think is, is, uh, it's basically just, it's just another manhole coffin in Indian County. Waste all five miles, I have a big problem with that. It's just a bit what everybody went through the last two years. If you've got a solid, you gotta waste it. You know, even liquid waste can be all safely intangibles and what have you. I just, I understand your concern for the roads, and I understand the roads aren't very good, but, um, again, you're just gonna make somebody, you know, grow old. I mean, you've, you've got, you have some kind of rationale to better accommodate what we don't know. And so, those are my thoughts. Thank you very much. And I wish you luck. Like I said, if you get done in less than eighteen months, you really, you're just a asshole of what you need to ask, so good luck. I don't have any other.
Who's next?
You may truly speak into the mic, please.
That would be my turn, okay? Sandy?
I give my time to.
No, you go ahead.
That would better me. I would be a good guy.
Yeah. They listen to me every weekend, don't pay any attention, so it doesn't. My name is Sandy Williams, and I'm from Marigold Township. I just have been listening over the last several months, actually, to a lot of what's been going on. And there's a lot of pressure put on smaller operations. And this commission, the county commissioners, the three that interfered today came into offices on transparency. And two of them talked with township people this past winter about wanting to be a chairman, and I want to see this as an example. I see this as being punitive to livestock operators, operators. I see this, I don't see the same kind of requirements of rain. Why is there really, um, you know, nothing about rain operators? Where are we gonna see that? And I know you can't answer, but it really feels lopsided, and it's gonna open the county up to more lawsuits.
Lilly?
Oh, Johnson, Valen, uh, I have three things I want to touch on. Number one, how many of you have children taking over the family operation? Carrying on for another generation? Now, I, is your operation going to provide a living for them?
No, but you know what? My family has been the Nathan County. That's supposed to respond.
Yeah. I've got a tax receipt from eighteen seventy, so we've been here a long time, too. The other thing is, in all of the talking, I'm changing this, changing that. Two-acre lots is all we need for houses, so we don't cramp all the variances. Okay, I buy a two-acre. I go out and I bring in my, my three-year-old driver's house, and I set up shop, and I bring in my forty-nine cattle. And there's plenty of room on two acres. And then I bring in another hundred and fifty head of other cattle, so I'm just at a hundred ninety-nine. There's plenty of room for them. There's no place to go with the manure, but thank God I'm on a side hill, so we can all run down the rack. Who's getting protected? Who? And, and limiting a number, you name me another business that would sit back and let people say, okay, you can sell TVs, but you can only sell eighty years. Because otherwise, there'll be too much junk going into the landfill. Why is it farmers and the next generation? Why can't they grow, expand, and remain profitable, so they don't have to have a part-time job, or a full-time job? If they don't want to. And the other one is, oh, well, their grandfather did. Well, I know a guy. He had cattle. He died. His two boys took over. They had cattle. They split up. Their kids took over. They had cattle. Okay, the last grandfather is still alive, he's eighty, and his boys took over, and his grandson's took over, and they have got one hell of a lot of work cattle. Then what did great grandfather have? So how old is grandfather in last? And my guns will say, he, okay, so I built a building, and I dropped it, because I'm old. They have an auction sale, Zane buys it. Oh, wait a minute. Zane already has an operation. This is gonna be under one manager, but no. Suddenly, he's gonna have a bigger setback. Why do we want to make sure that everybody in the ancient county is not making money?
Okay, who's next?
Chris?
Chris Michael. I wanna say that I pretty much disagree with almost all of the changes that you guys are proposing to make. And I think it says it all in the intent of our article, why we struck out the protection of agricultural lands from incompatible uses, which nearly every other article includes an ideal importance. And we also struck out limited residential development, which is the cause of most of all the problems that we have with ag zone districts. I also disagree with changing the class sizes from class F as being prohibitive, and it limits the ability for people like me to go into agriculture. And for some of you to portray it as a step forward in making these new classes, and since the overness was so unclear, which it wasn't, that that's what's from CUPs. That's just misinformative, and I think that it's simply just insulting to people like me, and I think that it really shows that the real intent of you guys changing this stuff is to, at worst, eliminate pretty much all profitable agriculture, animal agriculture in the county. And at best, you're trying to micromanage people like me because you think I'm too stupid to do what's best for the environment, or best for our bottom line, or for our people. The real problem in ag zone districts is non-agricultural people moving into ag zone district without understanding what goes along with agriculture. If you really wanted to solve the problem, you could simply place requirement for new residents to sign right of farm waivers, or maybe you should consider having a CUP for new residents in, in most of the zone districts. Consider placing all the burden on the people like me and my family, and the generations, doing things right away. Good to.
Robert? Robert Train. I've all of them. I've been coming to this zoning for twenty years now. And many, many years ago, they came up with this, the, one of the first things, with one or two acres, boy, that, that's what they wanted. And at the time, I said, it's completely ridiculous. It should be an eighty-acre minimum in agricultural districts, because you've got all, you've got your middle, high, low, all those density things you gave us. The county, the lake, half the whole world. We need agriculture in agricultural districts. It's a way of life. The numbers are going down. And what we're doing now. we have to make it more advantageous for people to take advantage of the new changes in agriculture. It's changed from, in my lifetime, many times now. It was when it started, livestock was the basis of the grain, it was all little elevators. The grain didn't go anywhere, it stayed local, was fed, it was added value and most of the averages, most of the farms, most of everything was paid for to be added value. Then along came this alcohol and things and it boosted the price and it helped. And all of a sudden, in the last year and back in this last couple of months, they're expecting very few, I mean, a lot of these alcohol plants to go down. And if you can figure out how to live on two-dollar corn, you can't do it, but you can add value by seeding, keeping the local, making use of things that we did forty, fifty, eighty, hundred years ago, different times, agriculture is a growing living thing and you must help it, not hinder it. Because in this, the thesis is to keep the county using agriculture in agricultural areas. And I find it asinine that raising livestock in the agriculture league requires a conditional use permit. I mean, that is the basis of it, if you go back through the history of it, that was a basis. Thank you.
All right, I heard a motion for adjourned and I heard a second.
I don't know why, I, I know why Jan here, I think it's.
Before any amendment or petition for a rezone is recommended, that's what you're talking about?
Yeah, we just need to find some findings.
I, I.